It's going.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor and Council meeting for the Berlin Mayor and Council of Monday, March 22nd, 2021. Please stand and join us for a moment in silence, followed by the pleasurable evening.
Let's go.
Thank you. A pleasant evening to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number one on our agenda is the approval for the regular session minutes of March 8th, 2021.
Mission to approve?
I have a motion by Councilmember Oris.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Ner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As the record shows, the vote's unanimous with all council members present. Agenda item number one B is the minutes from our listening session held on March 15th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a correction from one of the Episcopal groups who asked if we could add sale of parcels along with her focus on hazards and appearance listed on the minutes. With that, if there's another correction, I make a motion to approve.
So I have a motion to approve the listening session minutes for March 15th, 2021 with corrections from Councilmember Oris.
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilmember Ner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As the record reflects, the minutes from our listening session on March 15th, 2021 passed unanimously. All right, item number two on our agenda is a proformation proclaiming April 1st as Child Abuse Prevention Day, and we're going to present this to Wendy Mears from the Cricket Center here in Berlin.
Mayor, can I just interject real quick? Couple of housekeeping things.
I forgot your housekeeping.
For everybody's knowledge, on the back tables, there is a copy of the current governor's executive order pertaining to COVID and assemblance. There is hand sanitizer on the table. There are rubber gloves. Outside, on the other side of this wall, there is a restroom with warm water and soap should you need that. And again, to exit the building, I believe most of you came in through the back stairwell. That is a panic bar door, so you can exit through that door at any point as well.
Thank you. We talked about that, too. That was supposed to come first. All right, Wendy. And I saw on social media that, Isaiah, right?
Josiah.
Josiah. Josiah's favorite part of a meeting is also Councilmember Varell's favorite part, which is the German.
Roberta Bonn is here, too.
Oh, I didn't even see Roberto. And we have--
Oh, and that tracker.
Come on up. So I know Roberta, and she is the Director of Worcester County's Social Services.
I'm the President of the Board for the Cricket Center.
Nice to meet you. I'm Doc Timm.
Josiah.
All right, so--
Wendy.
Oh, my goodness. And Chief Downing is also a board member.
Chief Downing, do you want to get in the photo with us?
Yes, please.
Go do your Rodney Dangerfield over span.
Not a bit of it.
I'm so sorry. I wanted to straighten it with me. See, I see him back there.
We got two dogs in the picture.
How are you?
You don't have to stay until a German.
Yes. Chief Downing. Yes.
He's not saying he don't--
All right, so let's, we'll read the proclamation. So this is to the Cricket Center for April 1st, 2021. Whereas Berlin's future quality of life depends on the safety and healthy development of children residing in communities across our county, from the rural towns to the eastern shore coastline. And whereas Berlin seeks to raise awareness of child abuse prevention and support for children who have suffered abuse, and whereas the Cricket Center reports that more than 150 of the youngest and most vulnerable citizens seek support each year for abuse through our Child Advocacy Center. Whereas Berlin calls on all citizens, community agencies, medical and mental health providers, elected officials, schools, and businesses to increase their collaboration with Cricket Center in support of child victims of maltreatment and prevent child abuse and strengthen the community in which we live. Now therefore, the town of Berlin, on behalf of the citizens of Berlin, do hereby pay tribute to the Cricket Center for their dedicated service and declare April 1st, 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Day in Berlin, and thus commend this observance of all of our citizens.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Elbows. Kelsey, can we get one?
Yep.
Welcome.
Definitely.
And we're also going to be doing, do you want to say a little bit about the pinwheel?
Sure. So the pinwheel is the national symbol for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it represents to us the happy and carefree childhood that, you know, we want all Berlin children and all children across the world to have. So we plant pinwheel gardens, and that, you know, represents Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so in Berlin, we are going to be doing some pinwheel gardens coming up. I don't know if we have a date yet--
We don't have a date.
But we'll certainly be announcing that on social media and probably on websites--
On our town Facebook and website. And what we'd like to do is, we were trying to discuss the logistics of possibly placing the pinwheels this evening, but with the meeting, it's difficult to do that and take an adjournment or recess to go put the pinwheels in. So hopefully, one day this week, we can go do that. And probably, I think in order to raise the most awareness, we should maybe use some of our flower beds that we have right here on Main Street so that people can take that in while they're walking around looking at shops as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We appreciate your support, Berlin and the county. And, you know, this is, the Cricket Center's home right now, so, you know, we certainly have always appreciated the longstanding support. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And we appreciate the hard work that goes along with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josiah, you have a good evening?
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, can I do one thing before we get to the next--
Yes, go ahead.
Surprise.
Uh-oh, go ahead.
Jimmy Charles, come forward, please.
Jimmy was introduced to you via Zoom, but I figured seeing him live, any color was a good way.
Need to meet every, see everyone in person.
And Jimmy, also introduce yourself to the camera because everybody's watching at home.
Hello, everyone on Facebook.
And Jimmy's our new Public Works Superintendent. So just to everybody that didn't hear that last week. And you started exactly, your first day was when?
March 20--
February 22nd, I think.
February 22nd.
It's like one month ago.
That's right.
All right. So everything going well so far?
Everything's great. Glad to be here.
I must say that those flower beds downtown look very good, so--
Thank you. The Public Works Crew is doing a good job.
Welcome, Jimmy.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Resolution 2021-02, the resolution approving the town's reserve policy. And our Finance Director Natalie Saliv will run point on that.
So this is the same draft we have discussed-- Give me a minute, everybody. I'm sorry. This is the same draft that we have discussed in a previous meeting to establish a reserve policy for the General Fund of the Town of Berlin. There are no changes, no adjustments. We have not received any suggestions or questions, so it's basically the same. If you would like me to give a summary, I will, but pretty much we just been requested to remove the draft watermark and present for your approval today for the meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for our Finance Director, Natalie Saliv?
I think it's a document that a lot of people put time into. It's well done, and I'll make a motion to approve the resolution policy.
Sir. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Ner and a second by Councilmember Varell approving Resolution 2021-02. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As the record reflects, the vote was unanimous for Resolution 2021-02.
And Mayor and Council, that was a long time, a significant number of hours in preparation were put into that. So my thanks to Natalie. I know she's been tried and tested on that. So many thanks to Natalie for that, and many thanks to you all for putting that in as a real document now.
You put a lot of work into that thing as well. So I think that there was a lot of work that went in all around, so thank you. All right, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is our public hearing on the tax rate, Ordinance 2021-01. Before we begin the public hearing, I would like to read a statement just to bring everybody up to speed with where we are in this portion of the budget process. So at the last Mayor and Council meeting, I proposed keeping the tax rate at 80 cents per $100 of assessed value. During that meeting, I stated the preliminary department head's requests exceeded our projected revenues by approximately $130,000. I also informed the council that this deficit was something I felt confident we could overcome without raising taxes. Since that meeting, I have worked with each department head, the finance director, and the town administrator to close that gap. Late last week, I sent to council the most recent draft of our general fund budget. The revenues and expenditures of this preliminary budget are balanced at a little less than $6.7 million. These numbers are in the early stages since we are still waiting to hear where our healthcare costs will come in, as well as more firm estimates on our revenue projections. In the current draft of the budget, you will see that we no longer have a projected deficit, and we in fact have a little less than $100,000 in a contingency fund. The current draft of FY '22 general fund budget includes funding to replace an over 30-year-old street sweeper, the two new police vehicles. You will also notice funding for new tree lighting on Main Street, electrical access for town events, a feasibility study for the community center on Flower Street, and Phase One of the Rails to Trails program. One of the most important additions to the budget is funding for a strategic plan. This plan will be a community center document that will help guide Berlin in the upcoming years. I remain confident that my proposal of 80 cents per $100 of assessed value tax rate is the best path forward for FY '22. We'll now move to opening the public hearing on the tax rate. Attorney Gaskell, do we have to read the ordinance once again?
We don't have to, but we should, since it's very short.
Okay. Town Administrator Fleetwood, would you read that, please?
I will. Ordinance number 2021-01, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Berlin, Maryland, a Maryland municipal corporation, setting the real estate property tax rate for fiscal year 2022. Whereas the Town Charter, Section C3-10, requires that the Mayor and Council pass an ordinance setting the real property tax rate necessary to sustain the town budget, and whereas the Mayor and Council are determined what the real property tax rate shall be, now therefore being resolved by the Mayor and Council of the Town of Berlin, Maryland, that the tax rate for fiscal year 2021, 2022 shall be 80 cents per $100 of assessed value of real property located within the town limits of Berlin, Maryland.
Thank you. All right, so we'll open the public hearing. And we'll begin by taking comments from those who are in person with us this evening. And for everybody watching at home on Facebook, you can comment in the thread. I believe, Kelsey, you'll post something, say comments.
That's all right.
Okay. Thank you. And is there anybody in attendance this evening that would like to speak regarding the tax rate? Yes, Marie Belonge. Please, please come forward beside Town Administrator Fleetwood and just state your name and property address for the record, and then you may speak.
My name is Marie Belonge, and I live at 400 West Street. It wasn't a big comment other than I'm glad to see that you are keeping it at the 80 cents for this year. I think everyone has been through some type of hardship this last year, and keeping things a little key in the Finance Department is a bad thing. You can go for your incrementals next year, but this year, I think it would help a lot of people if you didn't. That's my comment.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in attendance this evening that would like to address the Mayor and Council? Do we have any comments on Facebook?
We don't.
Can we give it a minute?
Mayor, as we're waiting, can I make some comments?
Yes.
Okay. What I'd like to share with the Mayor and Council, this has been a long, a very long and arduous process. I will tell each and every one of you that the position that you're all in, it's not an easy position, and I respect what you do. And I also want to share with you something that's near and dear to where I come from. This council, some, almost two years ago, dedicated themselves, I don't know the right choice of word for once, I'm actually, I have a loss for words, believe it or not, but this council with the folks that were on the council prior to the three up front here, made a decision, and I'm very grateful for that decision, you appointed me to the role that I'm in today. I take that role very seriously. In my world, where my loyalty goes to is to the Mayor and the Council, and I'm giving it to you in the order, and then I'll get to my point. Mayor, Council, the department heads, the employees, and the citizens of this town. None of those four groups have any more weight than the others. The reality is on something, the way I approach life is that we're here, whether we're here as an elected body, as a department head, as an employee, or as a citizen, the fact of the matter is, we're all part of the same team. Will we get to the end result that we all want? Probably not, but the reality is, there's a lot of thought and a lot of mental anguish on everyone's part when you guys make a determination for what a tax rate's going to be. It's serious business. And I'm also here to tell you that we have a job to do, when I say "we," I'm talking about town staff, a big job to do. I will tell you all, and I'm very, very emotional about this when I share it. You look around the room, tonight I had the department heads from the General Fund here for a reason, because I'm sure you're going to have questions. Normally, I mean, it's a non-event, as I call it, but I want you aware of something. When you look around the room for a second, you've got, and if I skip you, I apologize, but you've got an Economic and Community Development Director at this table that's a professional. She's not, she was not hired off the street to be a party planner, some people like to call it. She is a professional in what she does. You've got a finance director over here who is a professional, okay, a well-respected professional. And these two individuals here, I know for fact, are highly sought after by other entities here in the state of Maryland. They are professionals in what they do, so listen to them, please. You have a police chief that I know is probably one of the most respected police chiefs on the Del Marco Peninsula, period. Listen to what the man has to say about his department. The department heads need to run a department, okay? The tools that they run it with, you provide. Will we make do on whatever the scenario may be? Sure we will, but also respect the fact, again, what all these departments say that they do need to do their job. Not an easy decision on your part. 80 cents per 100? Yes, the budget has been balanced, but take a look at the guts and how you got to the balance. I think that's very important. And I'm also going to say to each and every one of, to the council members and the mayor, and to the citizens of this town, I can sit here, I can stand if you so choose, but I will tell you that I'm empathetic and just full of emotion when we talk about our employee group. I've been with this town for 11 years, and the thing that you all need to be proud of is the fact that you've got employees that have been here for, the turnover that you have in this town is minimal, almost zero. Why? And I want to believe, because I do believe, that it's partly because of the things that you've given the employees, the leadership that these department heads have made, and I also want to believe that they saw some of the impact of myself. So I ask you, when you think about the employee group and the way that they do their jobs, it's important for the department head to have the things that they need to go back to that employee group and make those things happen. Little things go a long ways. So I know that you've got, presented to you, and I look at it a little bit differently, you've got two budgets. You've got one that was submitted and provided on March the 9th, and that was, as the mayor had shared, that is the department head requests to do their jobs. And then you have another budget that was submitted to you on Friday evening, this past Friday, that's been tweaked. I again ask you to look at both budgets for you to make an informed decision, and that's why these department heads are here this evening, so that you have that opportunity to make that informed decision. Because the decision that you have to make at the end regarding this ordinance for the tax rate, it's a monumental decision on your part and not an easy one. I can't tell you enough, it's got to be a difficult situation on your part. And we have three new council members. This process this year with budget has been, hands down, the most, in my lifetime, and my background goes beyond working here for the Town of Berlin, but in my lifetime, this has been the most detailed process ever. And I want to believe that part of that is because we've got a new mayor, we've got three new council members. All of you have asked 100 questions, and I want you all to know that the 100 questions that you've asked have been valuable, and they've been beneficial, and they've been spot on. So we're here to help, but we're here also, the bottom line is, is the world that I come from, and I'm going to pick on Councilmember Varell, because there's something that that man shared with me about a year and a half ago that I've not forgotten. The man told me something, and I don't know if you remember this or not, Dean, you told me something one evening when I asked for your support. You said, "You don't need my support. You need the majority of the council." And when that decision is made by that majority vote, the decision's made. So what my point is on that, when you make your decision, whatever that may be, we're going to make it work. I can promise you that. But it's a decision that you have to make. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any comments?
The only comment that's been received was from Gina Belonge. I think it's great that it remains. We need to tighten the belt, evaluate the important needs and table our wants. Sorry. Small screen and window playing music.
Wants, thank you.
Evaluate the important needs and table our wants, thank you. Next is a question for Robert Johnson. When will the citizens be able to review the budgets that were provided to the council?
And we can share both of those. They're in the preliminary phase, so we do have a point at which the budget does typically go public. In an effort for the council to make an informed decision, like we've mentioned this evening, the preliminary numbers have been shared with them to make sure that all the adequate information they need is before them. Yes?
I'd just like to say that what Jeff said, I understand, but I think that his list of importance was wrong. The citizens are first. They elect the mayor and council, who then hires the employees. So I kind of resent the importance level there, and that tends to be forgotten. How many of these department heads live in Berlin?
I used to, but I had to move out.
Why?
Knocking on my door every night. Because 4:00 in the morning, people do come, so my service does not stop at 8:00 or--
Two.
I was my neighbor. She lives in here. What difference does it make where people live?
Their interests are not vested in our budget. Their interests are vested in their department, which I do not have a problem with. I worked in City Hall in Ocean City. I understand this whole process. However, you have to remember, it's the citizens who are the most important in this whole process. And that's one reason I came to it. Make sure you don't forget. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, come forward and state-- Yes, of course. Come forward. We know each other, but go ahead and state your name for the record and your property address, and then you may speak.
Okay. Carol Rose, Red Seven Hand Drive. And I'm a born and raised spouse, and I'm here to say that I agree with everything Jeff said. I have worked with, I think, every department head sitting here, and they do have the best interest of the citizen in mind, always, always. And I think that it's important for what Jeff said, that everybody take a little bit of time. I'm surprised we haven't been able to see something with the budgets to get an idea. I mean, I don't know, is there, is there money there for, to continue like the flooding issues that have been worked on, or will that have to-- See, I think some of the citizens are, don't know exactly what's in the budget.
And just to clarify, this evening, we're talking about the property tax rate, which is, which is tied to the general fund, and the utility funds are what handle the flooding typically. So those will be a subject of discussion as well. We'll also have work sessions coming up for the general fund budget as well as the utility fund budget. So this particular document that we're talking about in setting the tax rate has some level of impact on flooding, since our Public Works crews do help out keeping things clean and things of that nature. But most of that is going to be found within the stormwater budget.
Okay, well, what have, what did you cut to get to that $130 maximum budget balance? What was taken away?
Right, so, and Finance Director Natalie Saliv, you can, you can help with the typical flow of when the budget comes out publicly, but the gap there was that there was a request for a salary increase this year in an effort for the economic environment that we are in. I am not proposing a salary increase in FY '22, so a portion of that did help close that gap of the $130,000.
How's that?
No, there are a number of things, but, and like I said, we can share that document online so that you can take a look at that and work out.
No cost of living adjustment for anybody?
No. Salaries, I have proposed as flat for FY '22.
Well, I just want to make a comment. I support what Jeff has to say, that our department people-- Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I'm hoping, we know each other, but go ahead and state your name for the record, property address, and then you can--
Jim Muckley at the 105 Buckingham Road. I'll make this brief. I understand where Jeff is coming from, okay? We've had a horrific year. We had a very surprise large increase two years ago. Fortunately, the past mayor decided not to raise taxes last year because of COVID. I remember when, when we were all out campaigning for our positions and so forth, and we were campaigning for elected officials, one of the big things was taxes. And we saw the results of the election, and I think it spoke very clearly that we were not in favor of the tax increase. I feel bad for the, I feel bad that the people who worked so hard, and I agree with Jeff, we are very blessed with an incredible staff. One thing I think we have to understand is, fortunately, we all did get a $3,400 stimulus, at least most of us, and probably all the workers, which was a salvation. And I know that, I look at this council, and I know who I voted for, and I know who I campaigned for, and I know that it's been a very difficult year. I thank them for keeping the tax rate where it is. I'm sure that they will consider next year, when we get hopefully back to normal normalcy, that things will start to pick up. I am a true believer that the economy is going to get much better. I know that the casino has been packed every day. I have no doubt that that's going to happen. We have some very large projects going on around us that's going to generate some income, and I just hope that next year is a lot more comfortable. We inherited a difficult situation, and that situation keeps going on, and we're trying to do what we can. So basically, Jeff, I sympathize with you, but we ask you for one more year, and hopefully, I think things will change. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments from Facebook?
There is an additional comment that really is not relevant regarding the tax rate public hearing.
As long as it doesn't include profanity or threats going--
I would like to know when the Germantown flooding will be addressed, since our church is considered part of Berlin, and that's from Jill Belonge. It's not relevant.
Thank you. All right, so if we don't have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak, and no other comments on Facebook, we'll close the public hearing. All right. And from there, we'll entertain any discussion from the council.
Yeah, if I could start, I'd like to ask Jeff to have each one of the department heads to speak to the issue, is the funds they requested in this budget what they need and what they originally requested?
Okay, I think that's a fair question, and I'd like to preface and say, again, there's a process when we do budget. And the process goes as follows. Natalie initiates the process with department heads, and it goes basically as follows. You know, whenever we get to a new year, we'll take care of all your personnel and employee-related line items, if you will, but the operational side, you, the department head, need to come forward, and she gives them a date. We'd like to know what your needs are and what your wants are, because there is a difference. The neat thing with that is, and I say it humorously, it's like, as a parent, when you're raising your kids, you know, what do you need, and then you have to decide what do you want. So, no disrespect to any department head in here, but that's the analogy that I use, because I got a lot of wants and I got a lot of needs. So, you all keep me in check on that. So to your point, Councilmember Mayor, I'll start, we'll just go round robin. Dave and Art.
And the question is, the budget as submitted tonight, is it what I need to run my department?
Yes, and is that what you originally requested?
I'm sorry, it is not what I requested.
Okay, and what's the difference?
It's all personnel costs. You know, it appears to, I won't speak for the rest of the employee group, but it appears that-
Let me interject real quick. I don't want anybody in here speaking for the employee group outside your own department, because you know your employees, okay? That's a fair statement.
I'll speak for myself, okay? You know, I do have one employee. I think this balanced budget, as you've seen it tonight, that's entailed with an 80 cent tax rate per hundred, is balanced on the back of the employees.
I would like to add a part to your question, Jeff. The draft budget you submitted, and this is to all department heads, was that what you wanted or what you needed?
It took several meetings. And in my case, I can only say, it's what I needed. There were no wants, no capital expenditures on our part, no new equipment. Mine is pretty straightforward. It's one of those smaller budgets by department. I met with Natalie maybe two times before I met with Natalie and Jeff, and then after that, we met, the two of us, the three of us, with Mayor Tindall. So it was a work in progress, so there were no wants in there, in my case. It was all needs.
Hey Heidi.
I'm in a very precarious position right now, because I am a town employee and I also live here, so I am very concerned about the tax rate, but I'm also concerned about my budget. To answer your question about was the budget that you're looking at, the budget that I submitted, no, it is not. If you're asking me if I had any wants in my budget, I did not. For the last several years, I pride myself on always being under budget at the end of the year, because I work towards that, in hopes that perhaps the money that wasn't spent could be saved for something that we needed in the future. There are things that I need in my budget that are not in there any longer. I think that if I had been given the chance to say in the beginning, hey, if we needed to make some adjustments to our budget, if it was left up to us to make our own adjustments, I think that we probably could have worked some things out. But instead, we were told what we had to cut, and I respect what the mayor had to do, you know, keeping the tax rate at 80 cents, I understand that. But I also feel that if we had more of an input in what our budgets were spent on or what was taken out, I think that would have been helpful.
Arnold?
I think I stated it before, this is roughly my 22nd budget, and it definitely is one of the most difficult. We've actually had harder times in this town than this. Believe it. However, the town is doing good compared to a lot of other places. Our employees, though, have stood up and been recognized time and time again. You have went ahead and said that you did more in the last couple of years, and you're grateful for it. Making statements are one thing, being in front of cameras are another, but to go ahead and out there really truly show the support when it's time to go ahead and lay it on the line, that's when it really matters. I have employees, roughly six of the last eight, that came to this place and took pay cuts. We actually have four recent hires rather than last year. They left Pokemoke, never stated, we had to leave Pokemoke because the town and council didn't support us. We didn't feel that support. When they walked in the door, I guaranteed them that I would go ahead and fight for them when they're right and when they're wrong. I won't go ahead and support them when they're wrong, but I will fight for them to make sure they get what they deserve. If they're wrong, make sure it's a fair process when they go through that. When they're right, to go ahead out there, say that they did it, they did the right thing, and I don't take the credit for it. I'm speaking on the salary side and benefit side. When you promise people training and education, and if you take it away or you move it, what happens is, you had as a benefit when they got hired, but now it's not. When you go ahead and say over five years that this is something you're compensated for, and then take it away, again, I don't think it's fair. When we talk about not having raises for a period of time, you can say, you can catch up next year, but you go ahead and lose it, you'll never redeem it. You can't. It's no way possible. So, again, the employees are actually taking the hit. They're taking it in such a way that they feel that if you had come to them, if you've come to us first and say, we, the town, have a problem and an issue, and we work it out together, we could work with it. But if you take the piece of paper, that took four drafts, and people working really hard, dedicating themselves to this process, and changing it, again, we might even have a want in here when it started. It is definitely no wants now, because we went ahead and out there and said, this is what has to happen. Previously, the council came to us and said, we have to go ahead and cut $350,000 from the budget. We've had times when, in the middle of the budget year, they said that we have to cut out all capital, we can't go any further, and we understood it and appreciated it. The council didn't tell us anything. They didn't know anything. What we had is a budget done a month before. Anybody looked at it, and one person made a decision. Now tell me, who better than me can tell you what I need in a budget? Who can tell you what's needed downstairs in the financial side than the person that does it every day? Now, you can come back and say, we don't have it to give, but you can't arbitrarily and say, well, I think that this is not necessary, and not even understand what that line means. You have to truly understand these lines and what it goes to. And it's not easy for anybody to go ahead and look over a budget such as these. People who don't work with it every day are at a disadvantage. Before you make a tax rate decision, you should know what the budgets are. You should have had the ability to go ahead and look at it and say, hey, your budget's one of the bigger ones, is any way that you can work with us? And again, we would have truly appreciated every bit of it. And in fact, we've done it that way before. If you come back and say, I need $130,000, put us all in the room, we would have worked away that we could go ahead and try to get to that goal the best we could. Budget assumptions. You cut it to the bone, we'll go over it probably, because we're going to gas, and then you lower that gas, but the fuel's going to be the fuel that is. The calls for training is going to be the calls to the training. So, again, nobody makes an educated guess, a good educated guess, more so than the people who do it every day. Thank you for your time. Unless you have any questions.
Any other?
Yeah, and before we continue, I just want to share, I've been involved, and this is not about me, but I've been involved in my lifetime from the personnel side, that's been my whole life. It's been my whole life. And the one thing that I was taught back in 1975, 1976, that's edged in my mind, I had a boss that told me, there's three things you don't mess with as it relates to an employee. Three things. Money, time off, and food. You mess with those three things and you've lost an employee. That's the reality. So that's kind of the thread you're in here, but I want to now go to Natalie.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, everybody, for all the good comments. And I just want to step away a little bit from what's the budget process and what is important. And I want to bring it up and remind that, we don't have to be reminded that we are servants of the public. We take pride in Berlin, we sleep, eat, and live and breathe with it. We go with it every day, we come to work happy, and we're very proud to be part of the town of Berlin whether we live here or not. And I can assure you, every single employee can pledge for that. The budget process is a process where everybody works together as a team, and everybody is proud to present the budget for the best ability to operate and help the town of Berlin. It is not about the personnel, it is not about the capital projects, it's about to be stable, financially independent, and have a good operation in the town of Berlin. The words coming in mind is resilience, stability, and not interrupted service for the town of Berlin. We can cut the budget to the bones, we can skip the equipment, we can skip the capital projects, but we have to look at the future. What are we going to do in two to three years? Do we have enough to operate without interruption? People will tighten the belts, they will skip the capital projects, but then, next year, what are we going to cut again, and again, and again? Three years in a row, we've been tightening belts, and we've had the general fund struggling. The comment was made once from Mayor and Council Daddis, it is not the way to operate. We should stood on our feet solid and be confident that we can tackle any disaster, any hiccup, and promise our citizens that we can battle this. I'm sorry, but we cannot say this today. We created the reserve policy, we're trying to establish the general fund, be very resilient, but we don't have means to do so. The budget, when it gets presented to the workshop, it's all must haves. There is no wiggle room. But again, it's the guidelines. We can cut it to the bone, and then the department will come and ask for approval to go over, or because something happened as an unpredicted, unplanned, where are we going to dip in if we don't have something on the side to cover that? Whether it's a street project, whether it's a broken street sweeper, or a police vehicle. Unfortunately, general fund operates on personnel. Personnel is what the tools and equipment and knowledge that we have. General fund is not a service-based fund. It is relying greatly, over 60% on taxes. Yes, but with that said, we're providing the service for the town for the general fund, covering public works, police safety, finance department. Utilities fund operating a little bit differently. But here, we have to say and see, if we're not educating people, if we're not investing in personnel, what's left? What are we going to do? And in the same time, we have to think for the nearest future, two to three years, what the steps we have to take. Thank you.
Hey Jimmy Charles, I know Jimmy, he's looked at the budget, he was not really involved in the process, but I think the big ticket item that's on the public works budget is a street sweeper. Significant amount of money, it really is. You know, we came back with a price, I believe it was around $40,000 less, so the question should be, are you getting what you need? And the answer is yes. So what's the big difference other than the $40,000? Smaller chassis, Jimmy and I have had conversation, and the piece of equipment that we have presented to you now in the budget will meet the needs for what we need. A question was asked, in that budget originally, we had requested a replacement for our 1989 Ford pickup. Can we make it run another year? Sure we can. But my question is, what are we going to do next year? I need that pickup. So, next year, there's going to probably be another pickup. So it snowballs, is what I'm getting at. So we've taken a strong look at that, and yeah, I'm not going to speak for everyone in the room, or I can't speak for everyone in the room. If we're told that you're going to push things off a year, it's going to be done. But what I'm asking is, what can we go back to and tell the employee group? Because they're probably watching right now. What they want to hear is the light at the end of the tunnel, you're going to push it back a year, what's going to happen in a year? Somebody tell me what's going to happen in a year. Natalie hit the nail on the head. The general fund, for the majority, 60% of the revenue, is tax-based revenue. It is. There's no hidden secret on that. So, and I want to make a comment before I turn it over to Mayor. I thought about experts in the room. You've got a textbook, an encyclopedia regarding the town of Berlin sitting right there.
Yeah.
She has seen a lot in her lifetime with the town. So Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you. As far as the budget itself goes, there aren't so many, there isn't a particular department that I touch any more than any other. I deal with a few pieces of a few different departments, probably the parks most of all. Usually I look very closely at Public Works in establishing that budget. It is relatively unchanged over the last couple of years. There's not, the parks, for the most part, unless there's a grant to purchase something major, is maintenance. So not a whole lot changes there. So I can't really speak as far as the questions that were asked earlier as to if this is the budget that was submitted and still reflective of what's actually needed. For parks, it is. But I will echo what Natalie has said, what Arnold has said about, well, at this point, I've lost track of who all has said it. We have extraordinarily low turnover in the town of Berlin, and that is because we treat our employees well. We always have. In 30 years of working here, I can tell you that we treat our employees well. I observe other towns in this area where turnover is ridiculous. We don't have that here, because the employees have always felt needed and wanted and respected. The types of cuts are proposed in this budget will take away that feeling of need and want and respect in one pen stroke. That's really all that I can add.
Well, I have to say, I have some very serious concerns with how this budget was presented. As Dave Inglehart said, it's certainly built on the backs of the employees, and it was done that in order to meet the 80 cent tax rate. And nothing destroys morale more than when you cut employee benefits. It simply is wrong and it shouldn't be done. In addition, there's revenue lines in here from money that may not even be realized. In other words, there's grants that were asked for from the county, and there's a good chance we may not receive those. So even if you were to take those revenue streams out, you can't possibly balance this budget on 80 cents. It just does not work. So we need to take a hard look at that 80 cent rate.
And I want to round out, I'm not going to put Kelsey in the hot seat, but I do want to speak, just to share, I've got my fingers crossed- to speak, just to share, I've got my fingers crossed and toes and eyeballs and all that good stuff. You know, one of the major line items, other than employee salaries in the budget, are employee healthcare benefits. It's huge. Eleven years ago, you know, about the first of April, the town had a slap in the face, as I call it. Healthcare benefits went up just shy of forty percent. Forty percent, almost a million dollars, do the math. We've been very fortunate the last ten years, we've been very lucky the last ten years. The largest employee healthcare increase that we've experienced has been just a little bit over three percent. We've been pretty consistent with a one and a half to three, three and a half percent increase. One year, we actually had a decrease. Yep, that organization failed, but nobody felt any pain over that, so that was a good thing. But, I mean, the reality of something, we don't know the answer right now. We won't know until early April, any idea of what healthcare is going to do. We built into the budget, the budgets that you have in front of you, a ten percent increase as it relates to healthcare, so that may come down a little bit. I hope it doesn't go up. Live building insurance, we built in a five percent inflation factor, I feel very comfortable with that. Workers' comp, we built in a five percent inflation factor, I feel very comfortable with that. March ninth, we had a ten percent increase in fuel. The last Friday budget that you have has a twenty percent inflation for fuel. And I'm hoping that's going to be enough to cover the fuel. You know, we all go to the gas pump.
May I speak to one thing about the insurance? Well, it's a little bit of everything. When I started with the town, and I know these are great benefits that many areas do not have, so very thankful, but, you know, we've received a Christmas one-time payment, and then the following year it went down a little, then it went down a little, and then it was out. And last year, I don't know that anybody really knows this, but I did end up putting something in writing as human resources, requesting even a hundred dollars per employee, just to, you know, bring a little something to a really tough year, so that was, I don't think it really, you know, was improved. And then we got the two percent increase last year, but health benefits went up. So the net pay for employees did go down for anybody that has town insurance. So, I don't know, it's just something to think about because, once again, they may go up, we may not see another increase, and, you know, net pay could go down again, so just something to think about.
There is another question from the public. You can take it. Okay. From Rose Zollinger, I'm sorry if I've mispronounced that. This might have been addressed already, and if so, I apologize, but why does the tax rate need to be set before feasible budget is determined?
That's a good question, and I think I'd have to defer that to the town's finance director and the town attorney.
So, in the past, as we experienced, we would go with the budget process, and we would draft the budget and leave the tax rate to the very, very last. There were some years where we adopted the tax rate in the same meeting with the budget, which creates basically kind of contradiction of what we tried to do. I have mentioned that general fund operates mostly on the tax revenues. So we can build a budget, we can do projections, and we can present a draft, and we can request certain capital expenditures. I'm going to give an example as a street sweeper, or projection to do certain streets, or improve the park, repave the sidewalks, or do something else. And then we go to the tax rate, and it's, we basically slash all these projects out because the tax rate adopted on a very different level, it does not support anything in the budget. So the process has been rethought in the past, and we decided that it would be beneficial to discuss the rate first. And in the same time, we would do a draft, very, very preliminary numbers presented and discussed. So it's kind of getting side by side. So knowing your rate, knowing what you expect with, from the major source of revenue for the general fund, because we're talking about just one fund here. We decided that we're going to do the tax rate first, excuse me, and then we're going to go to the budget production as a second in the process.
Just to add clarity, when was that decision made to incorporate the tax rate first and then the budget?
It was resolution, I believe, three years ago.
Two thousand and ten. Are you thinking?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to, to this, you know, this is the first time on this side of the table for us on the budget process, and I was hopeful that when I received it, that it was a budget that moved forward. To speak, I'm going to get back to the tax rate real quick, because that's obviously something that I've been harping on, and I understand that point, Natalie, I do. I just don't agree that it has to happen so early. As Councilmember Nerv pointed out, there is projected revenue in here that we don't know is going to be realized. This isn't a budget session, I was going to ask about this rails to trails, but I think I'm going to hold off on that. But ultimately, right now, we are in the middle, in my opinion, of a guessing game. And right now, there is anticipated revenue in this budget of around two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars that may not be realized. And the preliminary contingency doesn't even begin to cover that. So I understand the process that we are currently in, but in my opinion, this process is flawed. Obviously, we can't do anything about it this fiscal year, but it is something that I think that we should really give an overview and a relook for, I guess it'll be fiscal year twenty-three. And I do want to say something. First, I want to thank everyone for speaking, and it was kind of interesting for me to sit here and listen, what always is, but I agree with a little bit of everything that everyone said, and ultimately, it was said, you know, the mayor, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, you were elected with a mandate, and part of that mandate was part of your promise to work with us. And I'm not saying you have it, your communication, you've answered my questions, our questions, and on the flip side, we're all elected with the expectation to be informed. So, are you required to consult with us as a council? Of course not. But frankly, actions that are right generally don't require ordinance. I don't believe that currently that this is in our town's best interest, and I am very curious to hear what my colleagues on the council say.
I have a question before we go there. Ms. Rose asked a question of the mayor, and she wanted to know how you got at this number, this balanced budget. You started talking about salaries and salary increases, but I would like for you to be as specific as possible as to how you got to this level. What was cut?
So I've heard a lot of discussion this evening about two different types or two different copies of a budget, and one dated three nine, one dated, what's the most recent one, three eighteen. And that there's some difference between the two, that one removes a certain sense of a department's request, and makes it so that the council can't see it without seeing a previous copy, when in fact, that's not true. When I, I spent hours, and it's not easy to do either, to, you figure, I work every day with our employees, I come in this office every day. It's not easy to sit across from somebody and tell them, I'm sorry, I can't ask for a raise on your behalf this year, or I may have to cut something from your budget. But it's not done with a stroke of a pen. It's done with hours of research, it's done with consultation of every single department member, hours. When Jeff and others said that this is the most detailed budget that they have done in a long time, they're right, it is. Because for the longest time, what employees were asked to do was go back to the drawing board, cut ten percent. I didn't do that. I asked every employee, excluding healthcare costs and fringe benefits, to go through line by line so I could understand every single thing and how it's tied to an outcome, a service that is provided by the town of Berlin. And each step along the way, I asked myself and I asked them, is it what service level that we need to provide? Is there a different way that we can provide this? And how can we move forward with spending the taxpayers' money in the best possible way? That's all the people can ask. And I've heard the budget's balanced on the backs of our employees, I would disagree. I would say the only thing that has been removed from employees is a request for a raise, in some instances, a rollback of a benefit of a vehicle allowance affects three employees, I disagree with it, I've been very clear with the council on that, and adjustment for cell phones. And those cell phones, we provide a cellphone reimbursement for every single employee in the general fund, whether you work behind a workstation, or whether you're out on a trash truck with no other means of communication. And I disagree with that fundamentally. I believe that we do need to maintain communication with our employees, they need to be safe, they need to be able to operate. However, if you work behind a workstation fully, and you have a landlord, I don't know if I agree, and I've not firmly said one way or the other. I've stated time and time again, I don't think I agree with fully funding a cellphone reimbursement for those employees. And those are the things that have affected the employees. The rest of the things, I think the town administrator mentioned this in the past, before the mayor may have said, hey, look, we're going to cut capital from a budget in order to make other things work. This is a balance between doing the services that we are supposed to do as a municipality and investing in some capital, it's not everything, but we can't go from zero to sixty in one year.
So what capital did you cut?
What capital? That's part of my point, that everything that you have in front of you is exactly what the department heads asked for. With the only exclusion that the things that I recommend rolling back, I've asked the finance director to place a zero beside them. An F-150 does not cost zero dollars. It has a nominal value. Therefore, if you see a zero beside it, and I've said it time and time again, to this council, it identifies something that I don't think that we need in FY twenty-two. Do I think we need it in FY twenty-three? Certain things, yes. But other things I've asked department heads, not this, man, you got a nineteen eighty-nine Ford, grossing tires on it, let's go. That's not what I asked. What I asked was, how many vehicles are in the fleet? What do you need the vehicle for? And along those ways, I've determined with consultation with department heads, that that vehicle can be placed on another list for FY twenty-three. You'll notice that there are two police cars. When I asked the chief of police, can you do without one? We had great dialogue. There's a grant that is capable of being able to be achieved by the town of Berlin that could allow us to buy a police car and get over half the value back for one car. So therefore, there are two cars in this budget to maximize the fact that we've asked the police department not to purchase a vehicle in FY twenty-one. So we are making strides in capital. Is it everything that I would like to see? Absolutely not. Is it hard for me to tell our employees no? Most definitely. I have to look them in my eye every single day. But you know exactly what's cut because there's a zero beside it. It's a preliminary budget, and in years past, I can only speak from my experience as a council member. I never got the budget before I had to go down the tax rate. I have told every single one of you and myself that I want you to be more informed. I want you to know exactly what is in front of you. And that's what you have, information. I've also made it a point that I don't squash a difference of opinion. If somebody disagrees with me, every single department in that tenure that said that they disagree with what I'm doing. And that's okay, and I don't hold a grudge. We disagree on something, and we can have debate on that issue. And that's all I'm asking for this evening.
But, I understand when you say that folks don't have to agree, but in a negotiation or a conversation, there are usually two points of view. And if I'm not receptive enough to consider someone else's point of view, what good is talking? And what has been described here is, since like the meetings with the department heads, the only point of view that was considered was yours. And I would say... That's right. And I just want to clear something up. Natalie talked about the town of Berlin being good to their employees. I want to change that word "good" to "fair." What the council has always been to the employees, and not necessarily good all the time, but they have always been fair.
And I would like to answer Councilmember Durrell's statement about one point of view. Sometimes, the way that I've carried myself as mayor, it's been a short stint so far, but I've enjoyed it very much. The way that I've carried myself is I have a duty. I swore an oath to a job. The job comes with a description. The job description is open for anybody that wishes to view it. It's called a town code and charter. And that job does not say that a department head presents a budget, has a responsibility to present the budget to the council. I need to present a tax rate to the council with consultation with the department heads, and I need to present a balanced budget to the council. Those are the duties set out for the mayor to do, and I take them very, very seriously. And it's not that one budget is balanced on an employee, it's that I have to take into consideration that there are over five thousand people that call, or just about five thousand people that call the town of Berlin home, and they have to be able to pay the tax rate that we set.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, you know, you never once reached out to your council and asked them for their opinion on these numbers, not once. And that in itself makes it a dysfunctional process. You know, you need to be more inclusive. We received this budget, this balanced budget that's here before us Friday night at nine o'clock, so that gave us three days to review all of this and make a decision on the tax rate tonight. That's unacceptable. It simply doesn't work.
And to answer your point, you did receive the most up-to-date version on Friday night.
At nine o'clock.
Correct. However, through the entire process, what happens so that everybody that's watching at home can understand in an intended is, the finance director, early on, when I first got elected, sent me a copy of the proposed budget work schedule for the town of Berlin. And what I did with that was I broke it into two separate copies, one that was easily readable by anybody in the public, one that clearly stated when you could provide public opinion, when there was a public hearing, so it's easy to follow. A second document was for internal purposes, and everybody got it, every employee and every member of the council. It clearly stated the timelines at which we were going to have these hearings, what information was going to be received, and I stuck to that timeline. And as a matter of fact, I go above and beyond to try and make sure the council is informed by sending weekly reports when things come up to maintain contact. My office reached out with every council member here to schedule meetings, and in that meeting, I said, as the budget process progresses, if you have something, schedule an meeting, call me, talk to me. I've heard from some of you, yes. But if you have a question about a specific number, Jeff sent me, what, twelve things? And I responded to every single one of those things. I try to live by what I said. I want there to be access to the information, I want people to be able to make a knowledgeable decision. This is not pulling the wool over anybody's eyes, and it's not an easy decision.
I think we all want Berlin to move forward, but I think we also want to be able to work with you and help you make decisions, and this is a very important one. So please, utilize the wisdom and the years of experience of the council, we can help you in this process. We just...
I have a quick question. Going back to, going back to the cut...
Can you use your microphone?
I'm sorry, can I, you can't... Going back to the cuts, I'll speak up. Going back to the cuts that you just discussed, and we asked what was cutting. Cell phones, reimbursements, pay raises, was it a vehicle reimbursement, vehicle...
Allowance?
Allowances, and that was, those were the three items, correct.
And some training.
Yeah, that was everything...
That was, that was the one that I was unclear on, the training, the continuing ed. I was, that was what my, whoa, this is where the question was going because with continuing education or training to keep our staff, our, not just department heads, but our departments up to standard with the rest of the state, country, whomever, I was asking about the continued training. What was limited, what's been limited in, in that regard? Doing the comparison, I necessarily don't, I can't clearly tell what was-
So the change to training has been that I've, I've asked for no national conferences in FY22 budget. If there's a local training, if there's online training, if there's ways that we can help you grow as an employee, we will do that. But I, I can't in good faith. At a time when I'm saying we don't have the funding to be able to, to fund salaries increases, I can't say that I'm, I'm going to support funding a national conference. So you will notice that those have been removed in some departments, some of which are finance and economic development.
So I guess my next question then goes to finance. National trainings or trainings and continuing education. And I'm from, using the wrong term, I apologize, because where I come from, in education, that's what it's called, continuing ed, to keep our skills on point. So for you, when it, when it's, when it's been limited in your department and you guys, you're, you, what you work on is numbers, what you work with is numbers. So when you're been, when the cut has happened to your trainings, when it comes to a national level, what does that mean for you? I'm trying to be clear here.
So town of Berlin is a member of government finance officer administration. Basically, this is the one conference that we've attended in the past and to pray of. We've been presented town of Berlin as a part of this national membership for all the states, every single state represent. And every municipality represent a city and a state at this conference. In the past, we weren't able to attend and then we've been told to limit to one employee because we were cutting the budget. And then we've been told that every other year, we can't attend the national conference, which is four. So for fiscal '22, the instruction is, stay away, we're not going to attend. Now, last year or this year fiscal '21, because of COVID, obviously, we were not able. Tyler Technologies is the software and brain for the town of Berlin to operate all the billing, utility billing and meter readings and also financial system. Everything operates on the same platform. Tyler Technologies conducts a national conference each year to basically, it's broken into two parts. It's, it's geared to the professional development and the same time to educate in ways, what is there as a possibility for Tyler as an advancement? What's new? What, what technology you can utilize in within the platform? Same situation in the past. We've been told that we can attend every other year or limit to one employee. Not everybody could go and would comply. So going in fiscal '23, we've been told that we will not be able to attend.
At all, no one?
No national. They don't conduct it in the state of Maryland. The GFOA nor the Tyler.
Tyler, which is what you use, so unclear. Tyler is what you use to operate this town for the most part?
It's, it's our software.
It's the software that you use to operate the town? And you say the training is not on a national level?
Yes.
And this budget season, you're not, no one in your department is allowed to attend?
Yes.
So how do you, how do you combat, how do you continue your training and your continued at on that?
Been advised, if possible, to take classes online.
Are they available for Tyler? Are Tyler classes available online at all?
They're sporadically available as they schedule, especially in fiscal '21. They were provided more and more because of the COVID. But it's not the same level of training. So having a 30 to 45 minute, a small webinar, it's not what you experience when you go in the conference with networking, with presenting town of Berlin, sharing your ideas. We have visitors from other towns after we've visited the conference where Tyler actually coming here and taking us as a lead example because Tyler Technologies provided us with the solar billing, with specific water sewer billing. So it's not just training. It's also a, a grand scheme of being-
Right.
Presenting, networking, being proud of.
So that's, I'm, this is enough. Tyler or the national for the, for this is no, right?
So the, the logic that I use for every single line item, including training.
Right.
My request to every department was, please tell me how something equates to an outcome. That's what I asked. And when I asked the training course and how it relates to an outcome, the answer I was given was, um, I'm not going to single out any particular department, but large in part was that it was networking and that there was no real outcome outside of the networking and the sharing of ideas, which are great. I do not undermine those things. However, at a time when I'm saying that we're in an economic standpoint where it's not wise to increase salaries and we have to make certain cuts, I also think that a national conference is, is something that needed to be rolled back. With that being said, uh, like the finance director mentioned, there are some online courses. There are also some local conferences that we can take part in, which is the Maryland GFOA. And that is funded in this budget or proposed budget. And, uh, and then the fraud conference, which is local. So we are not cutting employee training across the board. We are cutting the attendance of national conferences. Now, I will say one other thing that, that resonated with me was that, and one that we really need to pay particular attention to is in economic development. It's high to the national conference and our ability to maintain our main street designation is something that we need to pay very careful attention to and make sure that that's something we can invest in in FY23. Do I think that it's sustainable year over year to not invest in our employees and not invest in them becoming better at their jobs? No. But this is a year where we need to make, make the harder decisions so that we don't have to make the very hard decision, which is, God forbid, laying somebody off or, or having to tell people that they no longer have a job. That's not something that I ever want to do.
So I'm going to make this statement. We don't, we have no idea. Had you told us last January that last March would have happened and the world literally would have shut down? I think some of us would have laughed in the faces of those who said that. I probably did when I, because one of the custodians in my school building said, do you know what might happen? And I said, whatever. But look at what happened. That was last year. Where we sit right now, we are fortunate to be inside this building because we haven't been sitting here for a long time. But at the same time, this is not me being sarcastic in a least bit, so don't take it that way. We have no crystal ball as to what is going to happen in the immediate, let alone in the far gone future as to how we're going to stand as a people, as a town, as a what have you. So what concerns me the most is putting a lot of things off for tomorrow because we don't know what tomorrow we bring. We don't know if we're completely out of the clear or in the clear with where we are right now. So I'm a little concerned with putting off many of these things until 2023. Because apparently, from what I've heard, and I may be wrong, but from what I feel like I've heard from the group is there have been things that have been put off in prior years with the hope of getting there this year and looking where we sit. To no fault of anyone here, because, I mean, this is the pandemic, for God's sake. But we don't know what tomorrow we hold. So how do we, where do we, what do we do at this point, folks? What do we do? That's the, I guess, the elephant in the room. Where do we go from here? Because we can sit here all night, ram-robining about what do we do, who said, where does that go? And honestly, it's not going to get us anywhere unless we are going to make the decision, be it today, next meeting, or two meetings from now, however the law says we handle this. What do we do? That's my question to the group.
So we are seeking action by the council to seek on the tax rate.
I do have one more comment submitted via Facebook from Gina Belong. How does an examination of department line budget items affect promises made by elected council members? Keeping the tax rate was one of your promises. It's not directed down anyone in particular.
So I can answer for Shanice Nichols. I can tell you from a political standpoint, and I'm really not a politician. I mean, I guess I sit here as well.
You are now.
So really and truly, really and truly, my, my, my comment always has been, we're going to have healthy conversation in regards to budgets. Healthy conversation. I feel that where we sit right now, we're borderlining on unhealthy if we keep going down that rabbit hole. But right now, this is healthy conversation. So from a political standpoint, this is what I said that I would do. I'm not saying that that's what this is all about for any of us. I'm not here to be political. I'm here on the behalf of this town as a whole. My household is a household of many. And to ask the questions that so many can't ask because they aren't here. So when it comes to, is this about politics? At the end of the day, maybe it is, but for me, it's not. It's, it's asking the healthy questions to get the answers that we all ask, that everyone wants to know so we can move forward for this town. Because at the end of the day, regardless of where you reside, where you may or may not head at night, you spend 95% of your time in this town of Berlin, if you are an employee. If you live here, then this is where we are. This is our town. Those people who have moved here recently, they moved here because of this town. They moved here because of the clean streets, because of the nice sidewalks. They moved here because, and I don't even want to go down the coolest thing, but they moved here because this town is a beautiful place to live. They did not move here because there are potholes on streets. We can't fix all of that today, no we can't. And there are some streets that do need some work. But if we don't address how we move forward with this budget or how we move forward with this tax rate even, how are we going to fix anything? How do you maintain the level of comfort that this town as a whole has gotten accustomed to if we don't address this right here? So I mean, it's not necessarily about politics. It's about what do we do to maintain and keep this town functioning at the same level that we're on right now?
Councilmember Nichols, that was very well said.
Thank you!
Very well said.
It's my turn to chime in. Past history tells us more than anything we can look back on. And the one thing we made a mistake on while I was sitting up here is not raising the taxes incrementally while we should have been doing it.
And cutting your rate.
We cut them instead in 2012, five cents. That was the biggest suggestion mistake I'd ever made sitting up here. It was a good idea at the time because we had $8 million in the bank. And we didn't need it all because it was all the taxpayers' money. We knew what we needed and what was coming up, and we thought we were going to be okay. What we didn't see was the wastewater plant plumbing into grid ink. But, well, just like Shanice said, we, we can talk about what went wrong on, but we got to fix it. And one thing's nobody's even mentioned in here. Number one, I want to go back to the $130,000 proposal because I don't think we should cut down on these employees' salaries. I don't think we should cut any training. I think that part rate there was fine. It was upside down 130 because we needed that to get the job done. And we still haven't done anything for our capital goes for roads. I brought it up six, eight months ago. I've sent that's all emails about it. We have got a roadway evaluation we did in 2017. It showed us every road in town, condition of it, what needed to be done to it, and how much it was going to cost then, looking forward 20 years. Well, fast forward five years to year zero through five, we've done a bunch of work on roads, but we're only halfway to where we were supposed to be. We still got a half a million dollars to spend this year to stay on that schedule. Now, obviously, that schedule had to take a little hiatus because of last year. But we still pulled it off with the impact fees and that state highway user revenues. We still got a lot of stuff paid. We got a million dollars to come up with in roads in the next 10, in the next five years. That's, we just adopted a reserve policy that says we're going to try to do this. But this budget reflects nothing even close to doing that, but putting money aside. We need $200,000 a year in the next five years to put these roads in the spot that we have told the taxpayers that they're going to get. And this is what we're planning on doing on your street on this date and time. We have passed this tonight on a reserve that tries to put $100,000 away. There's nothing to add to this budget. Every penny we raise the tax rate gets us $47,657 based on the assessments of this year right now, of what we're looking forward to. We need to start putting this money aside before we're going to have the potholes. We all know the utility fund, we're going to be a totally different situation. It acts different. It's going to be different. It may, it's more operational. But right now, there's only one, one place we got to get this money, and it is the taxpayer. To get that half a million dollars, we're going to need to put $200,000 aside for the next five years, unless you don't want to do it. Personally, I think we waited way too long to do it. That means we got to come up with four cents to this budget to do that. I want to put three more cents in it to close the gap and give everybody what we pretty much, like Arnold said, have promised most of the people that came to work here expected, instead of taking something away from them. You're going to need another two cents to get $100,000 into our general reserve fund that we just adopted. That's nine cents. But I can tell you right now, politically, it's probably suicide. But it's what needs to happen, and I've been sitting up there for 11 years. And we've been talking about what we're planning on doing. Well, it's time to plan on and do it now. That's just my two cents worth.
Now, I think council member Purnell hits on an important part. And that's our streets and our roads and our sidewalks. So in just about every budget that the town of Berlin has available online or wherever you can find it, it's going to have a revenue line item titled Highway User Revenue. Those are pass-throughs from the state, the local governments. They're a tax that you pay in essence at the pump. And we receive those back in a grant from the state to be used for things, for roads and sidewalks and things of that nature. And, uh, to your point, I did cut two streets or suggest cutting two streets this year. Those two streets are Graham Avenue East, which extends from Williams Street to BIS, largely used by the Worcester County School System. And, uh, the cut to repave Stevenson Lane. And the reason I did that was not because I want to put us further behind on streets. It's because we have a street sweeper that's as old as I am, that's falling apart, that literally the brooms don't work on. So it's in essence to pave two streets, which was requested, or to, to sweep every street. And I made the hard decision to sweep every street in FY22, as opposed to paving two of them. So it's not the best decision, but it's the best decision with the funding that we have available. To your point, council member Purnell, I think that for many years, the highway user revenues weren't, we weren't chugging away at our list. But we do have about $200,000 that should be coming in every year, as long as those funds stay constant, to help reinvest in our roads. And we, my request to the council in FY23 will be to reinvest in our roads. But in FY22, we have a $290,000 to $255,000 street sweeper that we have to acquire.
Which is one more thing we should put in our reserve policy, is a street sweeper. If we know it's going to wear out in 20 years, put 20, 15 grand.
Depreciation and putting that where it needs to be, you, you won't find another proponent of that other than this.
Well, depreciation will home good. That helps you out for your income taxes. But it doesn't help you pay for the thing in 20 years.
Well, what it does is it, it takes that asset and says, the useful life is X. The amount of money devoted to that useful asset is Y. And if you're going to sit there and use that asset, you should put away a portion of that to reinvest in that capital asset when it comes time. So I agree with you in, in the accounting sense and where we need to go. However, we are restricted by the revenues that are available.
And revenues are available only from one source, is the tax rate.
And we have, we have a difference of opinion on it.
We're a nonprofit corporation, basically. All we're trying to do is maintain status quo, service the services we need to, but it costs money. And I've watched us put it off and kick the can down the road for a long time now, based on, it should have been 88 cents two years ago. Under whatever happened, we didn't get there, but if we've done that then, ripped the bandage off then, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now. We'd be in much better shape than we are. We got to pay for the stuff that we got to fix, and it's no sense sugarcoating it. It's not cheap. And it's going to have to come out of it with one source.
Troy, I'll agree with you. We, we have a lot of work ahead of us, a lot of projects that need to be done. And we simply do not have the funds to do any of it right now. However, raising the tax rate four cents, six cents, whatever you suggest, I think is, is just too much to take on. Budgeting should be a slow, methodical process to get where we need to be. I would propose that the tax rate be set at 81 and a half cents, which to the average resident, Natalie, what is that, about $40 or $50 a year?
At 81 and a half.
Go, please.
Gary, can you put that up?
Yeah, we can bring that up. I think I have some here.
So it won't allow us to do everything we need to do, but we'll start the process. Get a balanced budget, restore- Get a balanced budget, restore the employee benefits that were cut, and allow us maybe to put a little towards capital reserves. We have enough as a tool.
The 81 and a half would be the third bracket. So it would allow us, with the assess value that we go into, would create additional $200,000.
So in layman's terms, to the average household, what does 81 and a half cents mean to them on an annual basis?
At the house assessed at the $300,000, it would add additional $60.
$60.
Annual.
Annual, one time, annual.
$5 a month.
And Councilmember Mer.
Yes.
Your suggestion is to go up 1.5 cents.
Correct, 1 and a half cents.
Which will increase the revenues by $69,581, correct?
Yes.
The answer, the answer is yes. And the shortfall is $130,000. So you would actually, in order to cover just the shortfall, as requested by department heads, you would have to go to 83 cents.
With the difference, I'm sorry, with the difference of the assessed base, which we are on the stage two, next year is going to be stage three, and we're going to be up for reassessment. The difference between this fiscal year and fiscal '22 year that are coming, the difference is a 130 plus 1 and a half, or a penny and a half, will give us 69. So total increase will be expected, as projected, if there is no amendments to the tax base, would be $200,000.
The issue is that at 80 cents, the top number that you see, where it says additional revenues of $130,873, that rate, with the proposed department head budgets that I received, had us in the hole at $130,000. To close that hole, you have to go to 83 cents.
True.
And what does that mean per household, Natalie?
The 83 will be $90 a year.
$90 a year per household at what rate?
At the $300,000, at average of a home.
83 cents.
At 83 cents.
And I think another important point, I forgot, Councilmember Fornell brought this up, is our reserve policy. And in the proposed budget that the council has, and that the department heads and I worked through, there is $300,000 anticipated slot revenues that goes directly into our reserves. And I think that's an important distinction to me.
It could directly out to pay it back.
No, it does not. It goes directly in our reserves to pay back what was taken. It sits there. It's not going out. It sits there to build back up what was taken.
Understood.
I don't think you're far enough.
Let's go over a question from the audience.
In all of this, you're still not talking about the fact that the next round of this budget is the sewer funds going up, fees, the water fees, and the stormwater fees. So $90, $50, doesn't seem like a lot, but we're already paying a lot. I'm on a fixed income. My income doesn't go up every year.
But Marie, you have to realize that the expenses of the town do go up every year.
That may be true, but so, Aaron Park, there's your $200,000 a year, right there.
No disrespect, ma'am, but that doesn't go towards our budget. That just pays off the debt that we already have for Aaron Park.
Well, that's part of the debt that you're paying that would put money back into the budget.
Do you have the chart that shows the tax rate comparison? No, 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 no.
I did not, Paul. It's not, I'm sorry.
You don't have that chart?
No, I don't. I mean, I have, I didn't.
Not available.
Not available. But I can tell you, even at 85 cents, we will be still below so many municipalities around us.
Where does Pocimog sit? I mean, I asked them because they're within our county.
Mary, you're going to try to find that. You don't have it.
No, I don't have that. No, I was just tempted to make sure that I can.
I can email that to everybody and then have it with Mary.
Basically, I remember it was 89 cents.
Yeah.
So 86 was below and somewhere over 90.
Yeah, all the other counties are higher.
Well, I asked that, not for us, because I've seen it, you've seen it, he's seen it, but they've not seen it. Or, I mean, they probably have access to it, but they've not seen it as of recent. So for us to know that we are sitting at 80 right now, and our neighboring counties, or our neighboring municipalities and counties are 85, 83, 90, 90 cents. I'm not saying that we need to be where they are, but in order for the citizens to have a true understanding as to what we're discussing, they too, that's why I asked the question. You know what I mean?
Kelsey actually just found something on the county.
I just pulled it up on the county's website. I can just kind of read it off to you. Berlin's current tax rate is 80 cents per 100. Snow Hill's current tax rate is 86 per 100. Pocimog's town tax rate is 93, it's .9375 per 100. And Ocean City is .4559 per 100.
And an example of the tax rate, the tax rate is half the question. The other half of the question is what's the assessable base? And it's indicative by the whole equation when you look at the tax rates that Kelsey just mentioned. Who was the lowest?
Ocean City.
Why? The answer is why, because they have a higher assessable base. So you have to compare the town of Berlin's tax rate, not just to our peers, but also to the assessable base.
And the other thing I'll add, Mayor, with the utmost respect, those towns that would just sounded off whatever those tax rates are. But one of the other things that I find fascinating in those towns, the town actually charges their citizens for trash pickup. We don't charge. Just saying.
Someone talked about, there was, somebody said, where do we go from here? And the mayor talked about his obligation to present budget and tax rate. And he is absolutely correct. It is the mayor's obligation to present the tax rate, to present a balanced budget based on that tax rate. But it is the council's responsibility to approve or disapprove what the mayor has presented. Now, where do we go from here? We, as the council, could possibly say to the mayor, bring us a budget and a tax rate that we can approve. And it's just that simple.
And I believe the town, I'm going to have to yield to Dave Gasol on this, that the town does have language as to when the council would need to receive the budget. I don't know if there is language as to when the council would have to receive the tax rate.
There is not language about the tax rate, but the budget has to be received 32 days ahead of the new fiscal year.
The state requires for us to submit a tax rate for the next year, June 1st. It's an absolute deadline. So that's another reason we tried to bring the tax adoption rate to a little earlier process, so we don't push it to the last minute. Like it happened in the past, that additional meetings were created to discuss the tax rate. And then it basically puts us on the line where we cannot commit to June 1st, and then the budget goes along in the same time. But alongside of that, we're talking about the tax rate, but just think about the future for three years. Now, we're not going to hurt the citizens and bring the sewer and water and electric rates in the same jumbo. It is a big net that has to be adjusted, of course. But looking at the tax rate today and thinking, what can we do in three upcoming years? Can we do the roads? Can we do the parks? Can we provide the service, the trash pickup, and cleaning the streets, and street sweepers and vehicles for the general fund? That's what we have to drive from. The tax rate is a mechanism to operate the general fund and provide the uninterrupted services. And yes, we have to plan and think, are we going to touch the water, sewer, and electric, and stormwater next year? Are we going to do the tax rate next year? And where is it going to bring us? So yes, where are we going from that? But looking up to the short term and what needed in the short term, that's what you should consider when you think about tax rate. Not, but balanced budget is not just personnel, it's everything else.
It's everything else. And I just want to say publicly that I feel what has been presented will put the town of Berlin at jeopardy. When you impact on staffing, that impacts on services. And needless to say, the quality of services. And we talked about the longevity of the employees here in the town of Berlin. That longevity is directly related to qualitative services. You may get somebody to replace somebody that's been here 20 years, but what do they bring with them? What expertise? And folks, I am of the opinion that the citizens of the town of Berlin are used to the best of services being provided, and that's what they expect. What has been presented to us, in my opinion, would seriously undermine, would seriously undermine the quality of life of these citizens of the town of Berlin.
So I presented 81 and a half cents. Troy's presented 89.
89.
Okay, but I mean, I take Marie's comments to heart. I mean, she's on fixed income.
I have heard many of our citizens.
Many of citizens, that's exactly right. And I think we need to ease into this. So I think we need to hear from other council members on.
Could I jump in and give some perspective on this?
Advice here.
Please. I'm reading from the charter, it's section C3-10, which is entitled Adoption of Ordinances. It says that "Any regular or special meeting of the council, held not less than six nor more than 60 days after the meeting at which an ordinance was introduced, it shall be passed, or passed as amended, or rejected, or its consideration deferred to some specified future date."
So what they just read, the consideration of the tax rate does not need to be decided tonight. We have 60 days?
Well, from the last two weeks.
Yeah.
It was introduced, this was introduced the last meeting.
Yeah.
And with respect to the town attorney and to Councilmember Berl, we've put the work in. If you push this down the road, my recommendation will be unchanged as long as our healthcare numbers do not come back with what we have seen in the past. In one year, we had a 40% swing. If that's the case, we're going to have to have another solid discussion here. However, what I'm telling you is, we've put the work in. I'm confident in 80 cents. I'm not coming to you with a different rate unless we have a stack.
Well, I'm not willing to go forward with the 80 cents.
Are you making a motion, Councilmember Berl?
No, I'm not making a motion.
Jeff, what do you think?
Well, I think that my stance on the timing of this tax rate is pretty clear. I think that, well, Mayor Tyndall has already indicated that he is not going to change it. So, I mean, I don't have a motion to make at this time. I would prefer to wait on the tax rate. But we are a united council, so.
Yeah, and I firmly agree with you that at 80 cents, we're going backwards. We're not taking care of anything. We're just kicking the can down the road further, and I think it'll do a lot of damage. Three cents just covered the $130,000 shortfall from the first budget. And I think we need to start thinking of some reserve lines away on top of that.
I don't disagree with you, Troy, but I just think this is the wrong year to do it. I'll make a motion that we set the tax rate at 81 and a half percent. Yes, at 80, yes. That would be a motion to amend the ordinance as it reads, correct, David?
Yes.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Mer to set the tax rate, amendment to set the tax rate at .815 cents. Do I have a second?
.0815.
No, .815 cents.
.81, .81.
81 and a half. Now, I will.
81, okay.
And before you vote, I will make sure that everybody understands that does not cover the, if you're looking at the department head's request, it does not cover the $130,000 shortfall. I just want, we do have a motion on the table. It needs a second to sustain. But it's important to understand that that does not cover the shortfall.
But there are other cuts we can make within the budget.
The cuts are made, Councilmember Mer.
Yeah.
So you're suggesting we cut further?
There are certain areas we can't cut, yes.
Okay.
Jimmy, about the projected income revenue, that is really not promised, really not confirmed thing, how do we handle that? By setting the tax rate tonight at those grants or whatever don't come in as expected?
Now, to answer the revenue side of the equation, there has been some discussion about things in the budget that might not be plausible financial projections. I would disagree with that statement. There is some speculative grants that are tied exactly to projects. And if those grants do not materialize, the project would not materialize. It would be a wash. So when we're talking about services, when we're talking about the things that fundamentally we do as a town, the revenues are based off of solid projections. However, grants are speculative. I'm not going to lie to you. The chief of police has two vehicles in there that we hope to cover over 50% with grant funding. But we have the funding available to cover them 100% if that does not come materialize.
And Mayor, I also want to make it clear with the council when we talk about grants that we're looking at coming in, let's also entertain everyone's aware of grants that are going out. Those are definite, and I say definite, they're in life and life. And those, those is Mayor and council who have control over it.
And to speak on those, there are three grants that go out. And I'm suggesting that we fund them adequately, the way that we have funded them in FY21. Those grants include $20,000 for hospital. We committed five years at $100,000. You will see $20,000 in this budget for AGH. You will see $40,000 in this budget for the Worcester Youth and Family Counseling Services for their youth program. And you will see $400,000 of funding for fire and EMS. Those are the grants that go out.
As far as the one grant goes, the MDOT Likewise Grant, I see there's $239,000 coming in, but there's like 300 lost going out.
The grant is, so we have applied for this in the past. The Rails and Trails Program, we've applied for funding for it. We received funding for the preliminary side, the surveying and the drawings and the sustaining of the easement to use the railroad's pathway, or the 15-foot easement and put a pathway in. We've applied one time unsuccessfully for this grant. When we were going to Worcester County to ask for the things that the town of Berlin needed, we asked for the $465,000 that we asked for in FY21. That goes to our public safety, police, fire, EMS. We also asked for funding for Independence Day fireworks. If the grant does not come through from the county, which I hope it does, then we will pick up that burden. Hold on one second. And if we, we also asked for funding for a feasibility study for the community center on Flower Street and Community Planning associated with that. If that does not come through, we have funding in our community center reserve that's already been placed off to the side. And I would suggest that we fund that fully ourselves. I would like the county on board also. And then I asked the county to share in the burden of the Rails and Trails Program, not because it's specific to Berlin, but because I think it provides a lot of economic benefit between the town of Berlin and the town of Snow Hill, and connecting. between the town of Berlin and the town of Snow Hill and connecting, uh, via the railroad, uh, those two municipalities. If the funding does not come through from the county, which I specified to this council in the email, my suggestion, suggestion would be to cut that line up. So it has a not, it, it's a wash. Those, those revenue projections do not affect the services that we provide.
Didn't you say that the eighty thousand dollars we had to fund of that project?
No, the, the weight of the grant is three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars is the math that we came up with to bring the estimates that we had from the grant prior to current. The grant would cover, if we received it, seventy-five percent of that. There's a twenty-five percent match, comes about seventy-nine thousand dollars and some change. My request to the county was to fund half of that, and my request to you is if we are fortunate enough to receive that grant, to fund the other half of that.
Forty thousand.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's just shy of forty thousand dollars. We're talking a couple hundred dollars less than forty thousand dollars. So, though, we're not talking about a huge needle move here if, if we don't get it. If the county comes back tomorrow and says, uh, "Town of Berlin, you give four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars," we're still gonna fund our fireworks, we're still hopefully gonna fund the community center, and we would not devote forty thousand dollars to our Rails and Trails Program.
So, Mr. Mayor, I know, um, I know we have a motion on the table, but just real quick, Mayor...
Good, my motion takes a second in order to sustain.
Well, I know, but I just, since the Rails and Trails came up, um, when you went to the Commissioners, I understand it was, it was described as a connecting endeavor. Uh, I believe the town of Snow Hill Mayor is presenting the budget for them tomorrow night. Have you reached out to them as a joint venture? Are they, why, why is Berlin footing the entire bill for this between, this partnership?
Well, we're talking about, uh, phase one of the Rails and Trails Program for Berlin. It's only in the town of Berlin. Three hundred thousand dollars is not gonna come near enough to connect the town of Berlin with the town of Snow Hill.
So this is what was originally proposed from like fifty to, you know, the town?
Uh, no, it breaks that even to, into smaller phases. So we're talking about the core section in the, the heart of downtown Berlin. Uh, it doesn't do the north, and it doesn't do the south. It does the core section. Uh, my recommendation, if we're fortunate enough to receive the funding, is that we don't work north, we work south, trying to connect Snow Hill to Berlin. To your point, the, the mayor of Snow Hill, current mayor of Snow Hill, and I have spoken, the current mayor, uh, town administrator of Snow Hill, and I have spoken. I understand that they're gonna have an election. They may have a new mayor. Uh, when that happens, I will speak to them as well.
Okay.
Thank you. So we have a, a motion on the table. We do not have a second for a tax rate of eighty-one and a half cents, producing an extra sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Can I ask a question before we do that? Before I say how I feel about the mayor's decision? What does the sixty-nine thousand dollar, I mean, I know that that doesn't cover the, the difference between the previous and the prior. How do we break that up? Or do, or who does, who makes that decision?
Sixty-nine thousand dollars would cover the F one fifty, uh, just as an example. Would cover the F one fifty for public works, and it would cover your, possibly cover your two streets that need to be paved.
Well, say we don't wanna do the floodgiving, the two streets. My, I guess my question is, if this is agreed upon, where does that go? Who, who, where does that decision, where is that?
We can apply it to whatever money.
So we make the decision as to where, that's sixty-nine thousand dollars.
The legal thing, yes.
Well, that, that...
That's not entirely true.
No, no, no. The mayor presents a budget.
Which he did.
No, he doesn't. He does it by ordinance, and it's not, that, that's not his final budget yet.
Well, see, that's why I'm having, I mean, eighty-one point five?
There, there will be a budget ordinance that is introduced, uh, probably in...
That is, that is correct. There is a budget schedule that clearly states when the budget will be introduced. The council has it in the public house. This is not the budget that will be submitted. It may look similar, but it also may change. Hence why it is a preliminary budget with preliminary revenues and expenses.
So if you set the tax rate at eighty-one and a half cents, the mayor will still be the decision maker as to where that extra money goes.
Yeah.
At least in the, at least in the ordinance that he presents to the council.
But we can change that.
You, you would be able to offer amendments to any ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah.
But, uh, Councilmember Nichols, to your point, it would not fund raises?
I'm just curious as to what it would do. That's, that's my question.
Now, I'm getting a puzzled look by the town administrator. It may fund raises. I don't think...
Well, it, it, let, let's back up two things. First of all, the county grant of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, that is a general fund grant that comes to the town. We decide, the mayor decides, you all decide how that's gonna be, what are you gonna call it when it goes out? But that is a general fund grant to your town. Okay, it doesn't come to us, which turns on and says that you have to use it. We can fight fireworks for it, okay?
It's unrestricted.
It's unrestricted.
For general fund purposes.
Okay. To the mayor's point about the, with the, and I, and I have a rough time, but a cent and a half to sixty, I think sixty-nine thousand dollars, the, within the general fund, uh, the, the proposed from the department heads, uh, employee increase, that just falls shy of about fifty thousand dollars. Just shy. So call it fifty thousand. So the wood, that, that money would cover that. But again, you're looking at the pickup, you're looking at the streets, you're looking at, I mean, we actually had, we actually had in our original draft budget in, uh, in, in capital to do new windows, it can all, it was the windows.
And that is in this budget?
That is.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm just saying, giving, giving you ideas here.
But that increase could cover the employee training and maybe a one and a half percent employee increase if necessary.
Probably, yeah.
So you can look at it.
Okay.
It's very dropped, it's a very preliminary number. So you will have a budget workshop upcoming. I'm looking at our schedule just to bring the dates. General Fund Budget Workshop, uh, April the twelfth, or between now and then, it could, it probably changes me, it could be redrafted, the suggestions will be, um, input in that budget. And then that's, April twelfth is still a work session. It's a work in process.
What would there send you?
Three cents would... Go ahead, go ahead. Three cents would cover your gap.
Well, it would give additional hundred thirty-nine approximately with a total of two seventy, including the change in the assessable base.
And roughly nine, ninety cents increase?
Nine.
Or ninety dollars, sorry?
Roughly ninety dollars increase per year.
On a, on a property assessed three hundred dollars.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
And that's eighty-three cents.
That would be a hundred and twenty dollars.
We were... We were...
I'm sorry.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, the math wasn't right. It was, it would be a hundred and twenty. If, if, if one and a half cents is sixty dollars, three cents would be a hundred and twenty.
What does eighty-three cents do, Natalie, Tom? I can't see it.
Eighty-two cents was sixty dollars, eighty-three cents ninety.
Okay, so eighty-one, eighty-one and a half cents is not sixty.
It would be a little bit less. It just rounded a lot to the nearest. Again, not everybody's home appraised at three hundred thousand.
All right, are you still accepting public moments?
You can speak, go ahead.
Okay.
Just please, we know each other, but state your name and, and title and...
Can I, can I, do you mind if I pull this down for a moment? My name's Collins. I'm Director of Government Affairs for the Coastal Association of Builders. Uh, I don't live in Berlin, but I do work here every day on Franklin Street. Um, we obviously opposed the large raids several years ago. You've talked a lot about the employees and, and the employees are, are, are people who live in the city. What you haven't talked about a lot is the homeowners. There are a lot of homeowners who are without jobs, who are furloughed, who are laid off, who are facing budget issues. And what they would like to count on is a budget that they can predict. So if you are going to think about raising it, I was just making you think about raising it in a stepped fashion. Say, we're gonna do so many percent over the next five years, rather than say we need to tackle ten percent this year or one percent, and we'll see what happens next year, maybe say we wanna get to this point, and we're gonna do it in this form or fashion. And that maybe give the people of Berlin a, a way to plan for it in their own budgets.
Colin?
Yes.
So Colin, I appreciate what you said. That goes to point as to part of where Jay was going with what he had to say, and that's to me, to get that part. Cause I believe if Jay's correct, and I think Troy's number of getting what he wants he gets over an incremental time, which is what Natalie's been discussing for months, right? Incremental increases.
Slow, methodical increases.
Exactly. Slow, methodical, with the one point five cent increase over the next seven years.
Maybe next year you do a penny.
Well, next year you might not wanna touch it, because I mean, what we haven't discussed is what possible, maybe happening next year in fiscal or budget year, uh, fiscal year budget twenty-two, twenty-three, once the county assessments. Isn't that next year?
Yes.
County assessment. So with that being said, with the county being something to look at for the entire town as, as property owners next year, we as a town may not want to touch increases in twenty twenty-three. We've not talked about that here. I was thinking that somebody would have brought that up, but I know that that's not directed Berlin, but it's going to be directly Berlin. So if we don't touch it this year, next year when the county does it, and I'm not putting you on the spot, sir, but I'm, I'm listening to your methodical increases, it's, it's like a trifecta. She says it, he says it, you say it. Where, I mean, it's, it's something that we probably, that we need to deal with and address, but if the county is going to assess next year, is the town of Berlin really going to increase next year?
I'd say yeah.
Yeah.
I'm right to the death of it.
So do we as a, do we as a, do we as a decision-making body want to put another increase on the table?
You, you can't, you can't, you can't bind a future town.
Oh, no, I understand that. I mean, that's...
I just wanted to make sure.
I understand that.
You can't do, you couldn't pass legislation today.
Right.
In fact, next year...
Well, no, no, and I, and I understand that, Dave. I'm not trying to put us on the legal spot. But I mean, it's food for thought when it comes to the general public as to what's in the immediate future, in the next year or thereabout. So you're thinking small amounts if there is an increase? In the real term, what are you, what are you thinking?
I, I think that's a, I mean, I think Mayor, Mayor Tyndall's recommendation is a good one. I, I think the, the current climate that we're living in is not one to raise taxes. You've got a bunch of people who are residents of the area who are hurting financially for a variety of reasons. If you, however, weigh the two, I would say a much more, a smaller increase would be reasonable as opposed to saying we need to cover the whole shortfall.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Just, just staying ahead, last year one point seven percent. Every year is that much, and if you don't raise that percentage, you're going backwards, especially with putting nothing into any capital projects. I, and I know it's not good news, but we gotta start putting some money back into this, streets infrastructure. And that's, and as soon as the better goes, all you're doing, if you wait here, is just pushing it down the river with your throat. I, I'll make a motion to go to eighty-six.
So I have a motion to increase the tax rate from eighty cents to eighty-six cents by Councilmember Purnell. I would need a second. Last call for a second at eighty-six cents. Motion done.
I moved that we go to eighty-three cents.
I have a motion by Councilmember Burrell to move the tax rate from eighty cents to eighty-three cents. I need a second for the motion to sustain. Last call for a second at eighty-three cents. Hearing none, motion done.
What happens if we reject it? Dave?
Well, if, if you rejected it, then we, we'd have to come up with another plan.
With that plan and couldn't reach a meeting? I mean, what do we do? This is, this is hard. And I'm asking this as a new person. This is, this is hard. I would be...
Well, just to add value to that, the tax rate that I'm proposing is not any easier.
Oh, I believe it. I mean, but this is...
But I am telling you that it is sustainable throughout FY twenty-two barring any disaster, and it is sustainable approaching FY twenty-three. I believe that with my heart, otherwise I would not be presenting it to you this evening.
I respect that, but at the same time, my heart is having a hard time with this one. I mean, and I'm, and I say that with all due respect to you and to everyone in this town of Berlin, because I mean, let's just be real, we're all struggling. I don't, I'm not saying that everybody's struggle is this, is any, is the same as someone else's, but this, this pandemic has hit everybody. We are all struggling in one regard or another. And to sit here and sit at eighty cents, possibly go to eighty-nine cents, can't make a decision on eighty-three cents, this is difficult, very difficult.
Yeah, eighty-nine cents at that rate, it's, it's three hundred and fifteen dollars a year in addition to what's currently there.
What I propose is, based on three hundred thousand dollar assessed value, is an increase of nineteen dollars, which, which is two and a half cent a day for three hundred and sixty-five days.
You know, breaking it down like that makes it real, two and a half cents a day.
I make a motion that we postpone the vote on the tax rate until the legally required time, so that we can get some solid revenue numbers, and Mayor Tyndall can reevaluate his proposed budget.
Well, sir... Let, let me just, uh, say here, the charter requires to a specified future date.
Well, the budget is, budget session is April twelfth, correct?
That's a budget session workshop, no public comment, it's not a public, it's a five o'clock work session.
The, the budget is to be presented for first reading. Correct me if I'm wrong.
May tenth.
Right. First reading is May tenth, public hearing on the budget would be May, whatever.
May tenth is the first reading of, or introduction of the budget. April the twelfth is just a general work session at five o'clock here. It's basically our brainstorming session. Um, I believe May tenth will put us over sixty days. That's not gonna be, right, acceptable date?
No, it's gotta be within sixty days.
So unless we're creating a new date, a new date for public hearing meetings, I'm trying to, I'm looking at dates.
It needs to be within sixty days of the last meeting in May, March.
March eighth. So it's like April fifth.
And I, I would say before, uh, before you go forward with this, please understand that as the chief executive of the, of the administrative arm, it's very difficult for us to, to progress further in this budget process without having some sense of a revenue understanding. You're, you're, I understand you're postponing a decision for more firm numbers. We, we would all like that. These numbers are as firm as they can get right this moment, and, and they're something that you can rely on. However, uh, by postponing this, you're not gonna make it any easier, and you're not gonna make it easier on staff, and you're probably not gonna have a changing outcome.
The revenues that you're looking at that you're not clear on are what?
Are you asking us the question on what we're not clear on?
On, on the revenues? You, you want a more definite on revenues. What revenues are you not clear on?
Well, for me, it's, uh, the grant, the grant information.
Typically, the county grant, we, we hear final when?
So let me, let me stick with the, a little about grant. Um, projections for the revenue for the general fund. Uh, I'm pretty sure that four hundred and sixty-five thousand as a usual annual unrestricted general fund grant will be received. Has the items that have been requested by Mayor Tyndall in his letter to the Commissioners, he stated additional items which will, um, put us at five hundred seventeen, three seventy-five. Now, the only item here, uh, expense of a general fund is forty thousand for trails, rails and trails. The rest of it off balance by the grant amount that is placed under M dot likewise. So if the grants are not awarded as additional revenue for the general fund, those projects will be suspended per Mayor Tyndall's statement. The only thing is putting us off balance here is that twenty-five percent match for the town of Berlin, which is rounded to forty thousand, thirty-nine something, something. which is rounded to 40,000, 39 something, something. Um, the highway user revenue grant, normally as a procedure, we are, I, we've always been conservative budgeting revenues. So highway user revenue, I try to decrease a little bit because it's a prediction of how many people will travel, how many people will buy a vehicle and register them at MBA. The 213,190 dollars that on the budget is what I have received from state highway user administration and I've taken that number to a penny to a dollar. Will it count to that number? Chances probably not. I'm hoping it's gonna exceed it, but in the past, it's not always been the situation. The rest of it is the projections. The major mechanism for driving general fund is the real property tax and that's the decision we're doing today and thinking and brainstorming. If we postpone the tax rate for another day, trying to understand the revenue better, it's, um, I concur with the statement, it's gonna just put a stall on the budget process. So we will be just awaiting for you to make that decision. Am I pushing for the tax rate today? No, by any means. It, it's in your right to take as much time as needed, but we just have to think about, again, I'm offsetting myself, what do we need for the town? What are we looking at for the future? It's not about line by line the cost. This is the guidelines. This is what we try to achieve by putting ourselves in this book, but hopefully the expenses will come lower, the revenues will come higher and we will have a, a healthy balance at the end. But what if something happens unpredictable through the budget process, through the budget year? What if the streets or something need to be repaired? What if another vehicle in a, of public works will, you know, fail because we failed to put one for replacement? What if the second one will fail? Then what? We don't have a healthy financial stability going forward three years in the future. So that, that's basically what I'm asking for a decision.
I think to help answer your question, the revenues are, uh, conservative and that the projects that are not conservative are, uh, ones that are capable of being cut without impacting services, which we've already discussed. And the largest dictating factor of revenue for the town of Berlin is going to be the factor that you said.
I would draw my motion.
So, uh, Marie Valong has a question. Go ahead.
What amount would be there to give you value for raise, the raise that you would have expected?
Ms. Marie, it's not about the raise.
It is.
It's not about, it's not about the raise.
Let's, let's cut all the crap. Of the employees. And I, I, I have no problem with taking care of the employees. So what amount are we talking about?
One, one penny, Marie, one penny, uh, increases revenue by just shy of $50,000. So to answer your question directly, it would be one penny.
But that is not, that is not the whole answer.
That is correct.
The whole answer is not derived from as simplistic as one penny and is not derived as simplistic as saying it's $50,000. There are some rollbacks that we've discussed, whether that's a benefit of a vehicle allowance, whether that is a benefit of a cell phone reimbursement for every employee. There are some rollbacks that are in this, uh, proposal.
Those rollbacks to me, I agree with. I don't see why every employee needs a cell phone and I never had one. I worked for a, a town and the same thing with the vehicle take home business. Um, some of that is unnecessary. This is a small town. It's not a, a major city like Ocean City or Salisbury. Um, we've got to like maintain that thought pattern here, but I do believe the employees deserve their money and their stuff and it, and there is no reason why everybody needs a phone. If that's the big major thing and even those, those training sessions you're talking about, I've been on those. A lot of that is just, it's not even just networking, it's learning. It's a way to get to go to Greensboro, North Carolina or someplace and have a good time on the city's money.
May I take offense to that, but thank you.
Well, you may, I've been on one.
I have as well, ma'am. Thank you.
That's just my idea of that. I think that Jay's would be, uh, a compromise that will get you someplace perhaps, but other than that, I think, you know, stick with the 80 if you don't want to do the.
I, I would say that after working with this budget for a long time, I think a lot of people can vouch for that. Um, if, if you're gonna do anything, the distance you have to go is 83 cents. Much less than that, you're, you're, you're gone in the wind.
So why didn't you go there?
Because I saw a path forward that did not involve raising taxes. I understand how hard the economic impacts are on our community, oh, to answer your question, and it, it was not easy. It, it took hours upon hours.
Have you seen the path forward at 83%?
No, I see a path forward at 80.
That's, that's not your recommendation? That's not what you just said?
I said, if you are going to do something to close it.
You said that you see the path forward at 83 perc, 83 cents.
No, my path forward is the 80 cents that I'm proposing. I'm, I'm saying that if you need to close.
You know, we're sitting here playing politics. We're sitting here playing politics with the future of our town and the well-being of our town. I, if the mayor seen 83% as the way forward, I contend that that should have been his recommendation.
Those are not my words. My words are 80 cents. I have made that clear this evening. I have made it clear that I see a path forward that does not involve jeopardizing services and that is my, uh, request to this council.
What I'm gonna say, I offer with the utmost respect and consideration for your position.
Thank you.
If that is your vision, your vision is flawed.
And I would say that you and everybody else is entitled, are entitled to an opinion. Mine was not made, uh, was not made easily and it was made with hours and hours of time with our finance department, with the town administrator and with our department. Not founding the time that I worked at home on this budget, which is why I'm able to answer any question you have.
I'm sorry, with respect, but my professional opinion was 83 cents and all the discussion and all the consideration to move forward with some sort of assurance and stability and resilience for the town of Berlin. I have not speaking about employee raises or benefits or anything. I'm simply predicting a day-to-day operations and looking into the future. The broadcast on 80 cents, it's scrambling.
And, and you and I have talked about that, uh, and the town administrator multiple times and I understand your professional opinion.
Mayor, I will echo Natalie's comments as well. I, I'm not involved in the decision-making process and my, my hat's off to all six of you, but 83 cents from my perspective is where you need to get minimum.
I think your 83 cents is just stabilizing the.
That's all it's doing.
All it's doing.
I agree.
And we need to do best.
Yeah.
We had a motto a long time ago, not killing companies, we can be the cheapest or we can be the best. I think we've been the best. That's why everybody wants to be here. That's why the home prices are rising as fast as they are. It's a very, very nice place to live and I'd like to keep it up. And I see some numbers here that at a minimum, in my mind, I think we need to be at least But that's fixing some more stuff and that backing off the 200,000 dollars and basically putting the streets down another year. So we buy the street sweep for the higher revenue this year, we put it off next year and then we use that extra two cents in there for another 100. But we haven't put any money aside for general reserves?
I'm missing your recommendation. So you're saying that we put off the street sweeper for another year?
No, 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 no. That's already in there. We need that to think long part, you understand that? But we're using all of our highway user funds just for one project and that's a street sweep.
I mean, we're confined by that revenue source.
Is it okay? I understand. We'll, we'll get that next year, hopefully, and nothing's guaranteed, as we all know, experience here, we need to get anything.
And we paved how many linear feet of roadway last fiscal year?
Oh, tons.
I'm asking.
Just shy of three miles.
And how many times in the past, since you've been employed here, have we paved that much road?
Never.
How many, how many miles do you feel like that's far surpassed what has typically been done at fiscal year?
Well, there's no comparison there.
I agree. And we got there by taking money out of impact.
Which we can't do again.
We cannot sustain that.
Right.
Sustainable is chugging away at the highway user revenues and staying on top of that list that you have in front of you. I don't disagree with you.
But it takes more money than what we're talking about.
And that's where we disagree.
Yeah.
Can we revisit Mr. Burrell's previous motion?
It would require another motion.
Right.
Oh, so I'm motioning that we go along with Mr. Burrell's motion of 83 cents.
Sure. So I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols to increase the tax rate from 80 cents to 83 cents and I have a second by Councilmember Burrell. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
So I have the vote as Councilmember Nichols and Councilmember Burrell in support of 83 cents and I have Councilmember Burrell, Mer and Oris opposed to 83 cents.
Purnell now.
Purnell.
I'm sorry. It's getting late. Purnell, Mer and Oris opposed to 83 cents. The motion fails.
So what do you suggest, um, Troy, I mean, I, your suggestion is 85, right?
I, I, 84 comes with what works together. I just, I just see things in my head and I know we need to do that are gonna get put off.
So, I mean, can I, can I, can I speak candidly? Can I do that?
Of course. That's why, that's why we're here.
So I, I understand exactly where you're coming from. I understand where Ms. Marie and the citizens are coming from with their struggle. In order for us to get there, can we work towards getting there? And I get you, I hear what you're saying, that we are behind where we, where we were projected to be. God, I mean, nobody saw where we were before now and this is where we are. Is it, can we, where do we, what do we do, fellas? What do we? 83 is rejected. 85?
I don't know.
I mean, I keep thinking of the residents of Berlin. It, you know, 3 cents is just too much in this year.
I hear you. I understand, I understand what you're saying at the same time and I think 83, I, I mean, before the statement of the comment we made that with 81.5 cents, before the comment was made that that wouldn't cover the shortfalls that we're already thinking about, I would have agreed to 81.5. You know what I mean? But.
It doesn't have to cover all the shortfalls. It gets us closer to where we need to be. It steps, you take small steps.
And I'm, and I'm, I'm for that, but I guess my concern is where that difference in the 81.5 goes versus the 80 cents. That's not that I need to have complete control over where it goes, but where it's going is what, is what's concerning me with 81.5. You know, do you, I'm not making, does anybody understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
So that's why I have a hard time with 81.5 personally.
Ultimately, we need to be responsible leaders here and I'm not saying we're not, but, um, I would entertain, pardon me, I would revisit Councilmember Mer's motion, because I have to make the motion then.
Sure.
Of 0.815 for the FY22 tax rate.
Are you making a motion or asking a question?
Yes. No, uh, that is, uh, that is a motion.
So I have a count, a, a motion by Councilmember Oris to move forward with a tax rate of 81 and a half cents. Uh, I would need a second for that to sustain.
And I will second that.
And I have a second by Councilmember Mer. All in favor, say aye.
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 I, I missed that. We're gonna roll call. Uh, Oris, you're a yes. Mer, you second, you're a yes, I assume. And, uh, Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote?
Can you go left?
Okay, Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Burrell, how do you vote?
As a camp, as a compromise to my theory, my recommendation of theory, I vote yes.
Councilmember Burrell's in favor. Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote? Councilmember Nichols, Councilmember Mer, Councilmember Oris and Councilmember Burrell voted in favor of 81 and a half cent, uh, tax rate for FY22. The motion is sustained with Councilmember Burrell, or Purnell. I will get it right by the end of the evening. Uh, opposed? All right. Thank you. Now, let's get back to our agenda. All right, up next is agenda item number five, the town administrator's report.
Our report will be very brief. Uh, the 23rd, uh, which is, I think, is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, wow. I'll be here for it. Uh, the 23rd, tomorrow, we have a pre-construction meeting with state highway regarding the, uh, 113 through 76 expansion. April the 3rd, we have a kickoff, um, meeting with, uh, the contractor for the solar project, General Schofield. And then a week from today, um, at the public works yard at 12 noon, a fairly well, as I call it, a retirement ceremony of Mr. Dabley. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Uh, up next is agenda item number six, departmental reports and I'll work our way around now.
Uh, let's see. Uh, Friday was the deadline for the COVID grant for the town businesses and we received more than, gosh, I think close to 40 or more than 40 applications and, um, the committee is going through the applications probably for the rest of this week to determine what the grant status will be.
Hey, Chief.
Thank you.
Up in report.
Jimmy.
Public Works Department is, uh, still, um, working on beautification of the city, dressing the wealth in center. We did some motion around parking lots and stuff and, um, this week we're hoping to attack the parks, uh, Henry Park and Decatur Park and, uh, we'll just continue on the beautification of the town.
Hey, Dave.
Um, hold on one second if you don't mind. Uh, for public works, for everybody that may not have seen it yet, uh, there is a flag pole located at Stephen Decatur Park. Uh, for the longest time, there's not been a Maryland or US flag hanging on that, um, thanks to the Public Works Department. Uh, we now have a flag hanging. We're also trying to work on getting a town of Berlin flag hanging on government buildings and government property. So thank you.
Dave, anything?
I have nothing.
Natalie?
No, thank you.
Mary?
I have none.
Kelsey?
I just wanted to say we put out a, um, an ad in the paper, it'll run this Friday, but for a, uh, part-time general laborer to start helping with, um, public works and, um, you know, things they've got coming up. So, um, if you know anybody that's interested, uh, that ad will run until we receive a candidate. So, that's all I've got.
And does that conclude departmental report? All right, comments from the mayor. I would like to thank everybody that, uh, spoke this evening. I'd like to thank council for their dialogue. It's not without, uh, without its weight. Uh, also our employee group for avoiding their concerns. Um, there, there has been a little bit of talk about some, uh, some funding that could be coming to the town of Berlin as it relates to, uh, the American Relief Act. Uh, we are following that very closely. Um, we've also been in contact with both of our senators at US level, Carden and Van Holland and both of those, uh, senators' offices have been, uh, very forthcoming with information and we're optimistic on that funding. So that concludes my report. Uh, agenda item number eight, uh, comments from the council. We'll begin with Councilmember Burrell.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Purnell?
Uh, good, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Nichols? All right, Councilmember Nichols?
This is, if nothing else, I appreciate all of the hard work that's been put into getting us where we've got tonight as far as addressing budgets and tax rates and whatnot, this is by far, for everyone who was watching and listening, a very hard and daunting task for us as individuals to make this decision, for everyone that is the town of Berlin. Kudos to my, to my cohorts for working on this. I, we got through it, but I'm not completely happy with how tonight went, but that's my own personal opinion, so.
Thanks to Councilmember Nichols, Councilmember Ner.
I just have one thing, and I hope I have the support of the council on this. I, I'm concerned about how this process went down. It, it was a very difficult process, and to me, it truly seems backwards, you know, the mayor, you set the tax rate, you get the budget down the road, and then we have one night and a few days to reconcile it all. So I'd like to make a motion that in future years, that when the tax rate is announced, that the mayor has to present his balanced budget at that same time, so then we have plenty of time to review it, to work on it, to digest it, analyze it.
Councilmember Ner, I don't know if a motion could carry that, I believe that would require a team to the town charter, which would require much more...
Well, the, the state requires the tax rate by June the 1st, the mayor doesn't have to submit the budget until what, May 29th.
Thirty-two days before.
And that's, and the budget is, that's the first reading of the budget.
But I'm saying, we had a budget tonight that we received Friday, I'm saying, I'd like to see that budget presented with the announcement of the tax rate, which was March 8th. If I may, in 2019, a resolution was passed that kind of outlined this procedure, I would suggest that at the next meeting, you have that resolution to review what that process was as established, and you can make decisions on how to change that process. This process was based on a resolution passed by the mayor and council in 2019, but you, of course, have the right and ability to amend that process. And that's what I want to accomplish.
We just have to make sure that all the members get a...
If it wasn't in the dates and guidelines of the submission dates.
All right, any more comment, Councilmember Ner?
Wait, so you're suggesting we take it up at a future meeting? That's... Well, I'll send the resolution out to everybody tomorrow so that you can see what it, what it is, I mean, obviously, it's, it's public information, it's available on the website, but rather than you having to hunt for it, we can send it directly to you, and then it would be up to you if you wish to discuss it.
You can amend, you can amend the timelines and that.
Yeah, and that's, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Does that conclude your comments, sir?
Yes.
Councilmember, what?
Again, thank you for everyone who's working on the budget and everyone involved. It's, it's, it's tough, you know, it is tough, but that's, you know, what we decided to do, and it's, it's probably never going to make everybody 100% happy, but I think that the decision tonight was a reasonable compromise given the pandemic, our residents and financial concerns, so we will move on from there, and thank you again for that, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public that were submitted in accordance with the package?
I do not.
Mayor?
No.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the press? All right, Councilmember Burrell, item number 11.
Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, I'm not satisfied with what happened here this evening, I just want folks to know that, but I do believe it was, it was a legitimate compromise to, 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 to that tax rate. And I would like to call on everyone, I would like to call on everyone, especially us, the elected officials, the leaders of the town of Berlin. I want to call on each and every one of you to put Berlin first, not our self-interest, not our aspirations, but putting Berlin first. And I think as elected officials, regardless of what we've said, or what we have, have said in the past, or coming up to this point, I think it is incumbent upon us to put Berlin first. And by saying Berlin, I mean it's citizens, it's employees, and it's elected officials. Move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Burrell.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Furnell, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Thank you.